I'd like to call this meeting to order of the International Falls City Council. It's 5:30 PM on Monday, August 4th, year is 2025. Please rise. We will say the pledge.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the council are present this evening for the record. Next, moving on to our agenda as presented this evening. I have an informal addition to add. International Falls rec hockey. Between new business number one and number two. To come forward and discuss a grant opportunity for a refrigeration system at Cary Park. Is there any other additions or deletions for this evening's agenda? And would you accept the agenda with the addition that I've proposed?
I will move second.
We have motions by councilors Kayler and Wagner. Is there discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, the agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda, approval of minutes from previous meetings. First, minutes of the Monday, July 21st special city council meeting. Second, from July 21st, the regular city council meeting. Third, minutes of the Monday, July 21st, 2025 special committee of the whole meeting. And fourth, minutes of the Monday, July 28th, 2025 special city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
A motion to approve them by councillor Holden.
Second.
Second by councillor Wagner. Is there discussion on approving minutes of previous meetings? Seeing no further discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda of this city council meeting, we'll move on to payment of claims and approval for payment of accounts payable. Number one, which is to adopt a resolution approving transfers, payments of claims and accounts payable. First, transfers. City of International Falls transfers to fund number 101 general fund from fund number 812 lodging tax fund, $1,225.28. Accounts payable claims. City of International Falls claims, $713,514.13. Airport commission claims, $146,233.72. Airport major capital project claims, $1,065,995.86. For total accounts payable and claims of $1,925,743.71. Is there a motion to approve these payments, claims and transfers?
So move.
Motion by councilors Wagner and Buller. Is there discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, these are approved unanimously. Thank you. Item two, an update from May 31st and June 30th monies held in deposit information.
Yes, so it was recently brought to our attention that the claims cover sheet that summarizes the monies in deposit for both May and June had a couple clerical errors. So the fund balance report that you receive monthly was correct as that does tie to our financial software. However, the claims cover sheet, which has to be manually typed by staff and transferred over from the investment report to the cover sheet as a summary, did have a couple errors. So in order to reduce the likelihood of human error, we will just be providing you the investment report monthly, which is done as a part of our bank rec as opposed to retyping that information on the cover sheet. So you'll just have one extra page to accompany the fund balance report on a monthly basis.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. Is there any questions amongst the council on these fund balances? I have worked with Emma and Betty on this and one of the reasons that I wanted this to be on the agenda was at a previous meeting with the overstatement from the end of June of $10,268,000 that there was $6,827,000. So I appreciate the update to the council and thank you. At this time, this is the first opportunity for our audience, open forum. Please, if you would like to come forward, name and address for the record and limit comments to five minutes. Thank you.
Alan Cruz, 3077 County Road 20, International Falls.
Excuse me, Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Could someone please run the stopwatch? I failed at multitasking. Please continue, Mr. Cruz. Thank you.
Yeah. Two Mondays ago, I had talked to the city administrator the day after about finding out the definitive answers around the policy for the ban shell. And she, and then I followed up with her last week and she said that there were stipulations, but she still had to get with the policy manager to get the, the, down to the bolts and nuts on what the stipulations were depending on the use case. And I was just, she's not here, but I was wondering if, if she had by chance shared that information with you, mayor, or any of the council.
I would have to lean on the council, certainly not with me at this time.
Okay. I had basically asked about, can the money, can the money only be used for the ban shell? Can it be used for something else? And she basically alluded that there were stipulations on multiple avenues. And so just since I saw the, the later part of the agenda in terms of talking about both ambulance and the ban shell, I figured I'd see if anybody knew. So that, that's all I got.
Mayor.
Please, continue, Mrs. Riggs.
Me? Okay. I just want to share with Mr. Cruz that Betty is working with Tim Anderson, our insurance agent, on those questions. So I do know she's working on that.
Okay. It's just without, I, I just think that until, until the city council knows exactly what can be done with the money, giving an open house, talking about it, discussing it versus, you know, maybe it can be used for the ambulance. Maybe it can't. Maybe it has to be used only for the ban shell. But seeing that it's almost been a year and, and, and nobody knows because no one's asked is a little, is a little shocking. But I appreciate Betty, I know that has been working on it. So I just wanted to bring that up. So.
Thank you.
Julie Malmstrom, International Falls, 904 Sixth Street. This is in reference to the four councilors. It's kind of what he talked about with the ban shell. Because I understand you're not going to rebuild the ban shell. And how much money from the insurance company and what pot did it go in? I want that answer.
We haven't gotten any money from the insurance company.
Okay.
And we haven't said we're not, we haven't said we're not rebuilding the ban shell. And we don't know what the amount is for sure.
Why aren't you going to rebuild it?
Well, we, we've got to pull out so that everybody can weigh in and ask what they want to do.
Well, how long does that take?
Uh, it'll probably take a month.
Because I understand there's going to be a building put there, but it's going to be like a garage to put their lawn mowers and all that crap in.
You're mis, I'm sorry, but you're misinformed.
Okay. One other question. When are you starting the lead pipes? I want mine started soon to replace. And if you don't do it, I will take you guys to court. I've done it before and I will do it again. It's to be fixed with my condition and I want to know when it's going to be started to work on.
I would like to lean on our city engineer, Mr. Fisher. He will have an answer for that.
Yeah, what's your address?
904 Sixth Street. I brought it up before because I have cancer and that's, lead pipes are not good. I want, I want to know when it's going to be started to work on.
Okay. It'll probably be next spring. That will be.
It was supposed to be this year.
Well, it's part of this year's contract, but yeah, the contractor lets.
But why, why isn't it being done this year when you said it was this year? And then you'll go next year and then it'll be the same thing again. You'll keep putting it off.
No, it'll be.
Well, it should have been started this year. Like I said, I have cancer. That's not good for me. Couple other people on my block have it. It's not good for them. I would be very careful because I know how to go to court. And I will take Ted Boecker. He'll be in the courtroom too for not doing the show. So why isn't it going to be started this year?
That project has started this year, but it's under the, it's the contractor's schedule that dictates when they're doing your blood service.
Well, where are they starting?
They're starting in 9th Street.
Why aren't they starting at the beginning of Fifth Street and work all the way down? Where they starting? They said, if we get our stuff in earlier, it'll be all taken care of and paid for. It's not being done.
It is being done, but just not this year.
Okay. I'll keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, I didn't, I was under the impression that the lead pipes were happening yet this year. So thank you for clarifying.
Some are as part of the Ninth Street.
With the bundle.
And the other ones would have maybe started, but that was to deal with the price of the bid. What we would.
Yeah, just the contractors getting that.
Yeah. But last year, we didn't accept the bids because of the price was.
Right.
Only one bid.
We will move on at this time to new business. The first item under new business is to adopt a resolution, excuse me, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2025A Ninth Street Project and sanitary sewer vector acquisition. George Eilertson is already here. Thank you, sir, from Northland Securities. The floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I'll be primarily referring to a handout that you should have, bond sale summary at the top. As noted by the mayor, one action item to consider tonight, that's the approval of a bond resolution. Approval of that, and, and we'll wait until after my presentation, but approval of that locks in all the rates and terms associated with this bond. This bond sale is, as we've talked about before, for two purposes. One is the Ninth Street Project, primarily the sewer and, and storm and lighting aspects of the Ninth Street Project, along with the purchase of a sewer vector truck. So, so Ninth Street plus the truck, the bond is sized at $2,830,000. Most of the components, the, the truck is financed over an eight-year term and the balance of the financing is over a 20-year term. As part of this financing, I worked with your city administrator and your finance director, Emmy, I'm sorry, Emma and Betty on assignment of the city's bond rating. And the result of that was the affirmation or assignment of an A-plus rating with Standard and Poor's. So a good credit rating was assigned. And just a couple of highlights, council, that went into the assignment of that rating. Out of the rating report, Standard and Poor's notes, the rating reflects our view of the city's healthy reserves, a history of stable budgetary performance and manageable debt relative to the budget. So, so those were certainly some positives that went into the assignment to that credit rating. On top of that rating, then, we went out and pursued what's known as bond insurance. And bond insurance is, you know, not too dissimilar from going out and getting insurance on your home or your auto. You have to pay a premium if you qualify for it. The benefit of the bond insurance is it's rated double A. So it's, it lifts your underlying credit rating of A-plus up to double A for the bond issue. And certainly we have to look at the economics. Does the premium that you pay get offset by the interest cost benefit? And in this case, the premium costs approximately $9,000, but it's benefiting you by lowering the interest rates approximately two tenths of a percent. That two tenths of a percent on your bond is about $60,000 of benefit. So certainly the, the, the benefit is there to add the insurance. The, again, I noted the bond has got an overall 20-year term. The closing date on the bonds is September 3rd. The final maturity is out in 2046. And what's known as the call date is February 1 of 2033. The call date is when you, the city, have the opportunity to either prepay on principal or refinance existing, the, the interest rates on the existing principal. When you reach that call date, you've paid approximately 30% of your debt or 855,000. Once you reach the call date, it's at the city's discretion. So the, people on the other side of the transaction, the investors that purchased the bonds, can't come to the city and say, we want you to call these bonds or, or prepay these bonds. It's at the city's discretion. So when you reach that call date, you've got 70% of your principal still outstanding, approximately $1,975,000 at that time. We'll be working with your staff when we approach that call date, just to let them know, are market conditions favorable? Can you refinance the bonds, et cetera? So rest assured on that, council. So over the 20-year term of the bonds, the true interest cost is 4.39%. So that's what you would be locking in by approving the bond resolution, is that true interest cost of 4.39%. Your staff, Emma and Betty, were both involved. We had last week a pre-pricing call. That call kind of talks through the market conditions, talks through comparable sales in the marketplace. And then we make any adjustments based upon market conditions. The market actually started to come your way, which is good since last week. Interest rates have trended down, so interest rates accordingly fell as well. So, so 4.39%, mayor and council, is that true interest cost over the 20-year term. I can address any questions that you may have.
I have many. Is there?
I just thought it makes, and part of this, of the project's already being paid for, with the sales tax, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And, and, and so people aren't confused. They're under the same bond, but the vector and the project are getting paid, are different things actually, correct? But we put the bonds together for the better rate.
Yes.
Even though they're, and I think we explained it the last time.
Yeah.
Gave the.
Mayor and council, good question. The, provided you have the ability to issue general obligation debt for individual purposes here, you can package it together as one common financing. The benefits, of course, being savings on cost of issuing the debt. And so yes, the sewer vector truck, even though it's separate from the Ninth Street Project, is, we're financing it together. For the city's benefit, you know, they'll certainly get a final schedule from us that shows, here's the individual payment schedule for the truck. And here's the individual payment for the Ninth Street portion of the project. So they can track it internally, as well as what revenue sources, you know, how much of that you'll need as well.
Questions from council? Why is this, this was just put in front of us Friday and now more today? So we have a, what I feel is a really large decision in front of us almost immediately. But why are these not set up as revenue bonds?
Mayor and council, good question. The, why not revenue bonds? The city has the statutory authority to do, they're, they're kind of like a double barrel, if you will, type of financing in terms of security. You've got, on one hand, the security of the sanitary sewer fund, for example, that's paying for the sanitary sewer portion as well as the vector truck. But then you enhance that with your general obligation pledge. So if there's ever, so the, the city can take the approach, yes, we're paying, and the expectation is we're paying for these 100% based upon revenues for that portion of the bonds. But if there's ever a shortfall, we can have the ability to levy taxes. Now, certainly, and we've worked with the city on a financial management plan for your utility funds that factors in projects like this. Here's what you need to set your utility rates at to service not only existing debt, but future debt. But, but, and, and the other benefit, mayor, is certainly interest rate. If you can do a general obligation pledge on your bonds, instead of just a straight revenue pledge, you'll get a considerably better interest rate.
And this counts, this would count against our statutory debt limit?
Also, good question. A vast majority of this bond does not count towards your debt limit. If it's paid for a source of revenue, by a source of revenue other than just property taxes, it does not count towards your debt limit. If it's paid for by just taxes, for example, you know, if there's the, the lighting portion of the project and that's, you know, if, again, if you back up and say, how are we paying for that individual portion of this project? If it's just taxes, then yes, that would count towards the, the limit.
And does, are there questions from the council? I have a long list, so. I would like to ask, are, at our most recent city audit, our reserves are in horrible shape. They're 23%. Our own rules that we've made for ourselves by resolution is 50%. We have an opinion coming from our auditor that unless we can take severe corrective action, which doesn't have to happen at once, that we'll have to accept a modified opinion on our city audit. So like I said, this is a bit new in that this was just dropped in front of the council. But it's certainly a concern of mind. Were, were you aware of the audit?
Yes, we, we factor in the audit. We, we put it into the bond offering document. When, when the rating agency looks at your reserves, they compare that to your operating expenditures. And oftentimes, they bring into the calculation available funds outside of the general fund as well. For example, sometimes cities may have a capital improvement fund that's not dedicated for a specific project. That may come in to the rating agency's opinion or their review of how much would you have in reserve.
Right, because we can raise our utilities costs and we can backfill a shortfall with the general fund if we had to, which means we'll just levy more money. I'm not saying that that would occur. Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council?
And, and mayor and council, just a, a quick note. You'll, you, in your packets, for example, for tonight, you would have gotten a resolution in your packets. That's preliminary. It's got blanks in that because we don't know final interest rates until, you know, late morning today. So that's why Emma printed out a filled-in version for you that was provided today by the bond attorney.
What is the, excuse me, what, what is the amount of the vector that we're refinancing? I was not able to find that with the information that I received on Friday.
The vector truck is approximately $300,000. So that's, at closing, that amount would be provided.
Thank you. And if we refinance that vector truck, where will those proceeds go?
I, I guess I'm confused by your term refinance. Are you, are you saying the initial financing of the vector truck?
Correct. The, to the best of my knowledge, the vector truck was approved in October or November.
Yes, of which we have acquired and we have already paid for. And we have done the resolution as indicated by Northland Counseling in order to repay that money. So we'll be putting it back against where we expended it.
Okay, which was from?
Would have been, I believe, sanitary sewer or it would have been cap out like sanitary sewer.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
We have motions to adopt the resolution by councillor Kayler and councillor Holden. Discussion can and sue. I will be voting no on this for several reasons. First reason that there's been what seems like almost no communication with the council on this, which I consider a big-ticket item, all of it. And we've been having some meetings about other financial problems that we're having. And I can't vote for this in, in good faith. And, and whether we pass it or not, that's, that's fine. in good faith, and, and whether we pass it or not, that's, that's fine, so.
I'd just say, we have talked about it, we talked about it at committee of the whole, we talked about it at Public Works Committee about this project and possible where the money's coming and how we're paying for it. So I think it, I don't feel it has snuck up on me, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, councillor.
I feel the same way.
Okay. I'm just, what I want to share is that if we're going to raise taxes at this point, I think it should be for the ambulance. So, um, any more discussion from council? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote no. Motion carries for one, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Eilertson.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda was an addition. I'd like to invite Leif Larson forward. He is representing the International Falls Recreational Hockey Association.
That is correct. Good evening, Mayor Dillon, council. I am here on behalf of the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association, and we were just recently made aware of a grant opportunity that could be applied for that would allow for significant dollars to help pay for a new ice system at Kerry Park Arena. And we, we've attended a few different public works meetings, and we've had this discussion for, for quite some time. We got some numbers on what we would be looking at to replace it, and this grant, you know, if, if we were awarded it, it would pump about $500,000 into that project. So we think it's well worth applying for. You know, there's, there's a lot of improvements that need to be made to Kerry Park Arena, but above all, we have to have an ice plant. If we don't have an ice plant, we don't have a hockey program. And we've had issues with the ice plant, um, gosh, probably the last three years, and I think we're on borrowed time with our current ice plant. It's time to look at replacing it, and I think this would be a good start. In, in 2020, the EPA banned the R22 refrigeration systems that is currently in many hockey arenas throughout the state of Minnesota. So the state of Minnesota, through their Mighty Ducks Grant Program, has stepped forward and has, has made these grants available to, um, any hockey community in the state of Minnesota. In fact, we've made the high school aware of it, as they also need to replace their ice plant. They're having issues as well, as theirs is quite outdated. So I brought with me a packet, an application. I can leave this with you all. There is a deadline at the end of the month that we have, would have to have it submitted by, so I guess with that, I guess just on behalf of rec hockey, we would strongly encourage you to apply for the grant.
Do, is there an estimate that you're aware of or were aware of for a new refrigeration facility at the plant?
Well, I believe it was at our last Public Works Committee meeting, Ted had spoken with a gentleman from the refrigerator, refrigeration system that we've worked with in the past, and I, I'm just kind of going off my recollection here, but I believe it was 1.8 million, is what we were told. Does that sound right?
I thought it was a million, but it was, maybe it was one point, it was a, it was not a.
Uh, it was roughly around, seeing as we're talking million, it's roughly around a million. And I don't know if that included some other things other than the ice plant either, but for sure, it's something we'd need to look into either way.
As you know, there's a lot of needs at Kerry Park Arena, and I think you're right. Pete, I think there were some other things maybe included in that bid, but say a million dollars, basically.
Yeah, but either way, I, now, do you have to apply for it as rec hockey, or does the city apply for it?
My understanding is it would be the city, because it's a city-owned building.
Okay.
But we would help in any way that we can in including financially, if, if needed, we could talk about that, too.
This was, and thank you for pointing this out over the weekend. I have some of the information on my phone. So, anyway, all the information is here. It requires an LGU to apply for the grant and to be the sponsor if we receive the grant. And it's up to, is it a half a million dollars?
It is.
So if we applied and we got it, we could figure things out from there.
Yes.
And if we apply and we don't get it, maybe we get to apply again?
Yeah, and we're no worse off. Right? I mean, but I think, yeah, I think thing did have to do is, uh, we'll have to get it, seeing as Public Works, get a contact head and.
One of the issues that we're really running into is when the ice plant does break down, because of its age, there just aren't now parts available any longer. We have to kind of, uh, put a Band-Aid over it, so to speak, and we just don't know how many Band-Aids we have left to cover up those.
Not many.
Not many.
No.
Right.
No, and, and it has happened at some in out opportune times when, you know, luckily they were able to get it up and running.
Where we got lucky was we had two compressors that were alternating back and forth and taking the load off of each one, okay, equal time. And one went down, we at least had another one to get back, keep in operation. And then we just got lucky a number of times. The other thing that's needed is the refrigerant. We need to get the up-to-date refrigerant in there. Those are big things.
And that, and that's because actually, we don't have the two going, we got one now that they try to keep going because, like, say, can't get parts, like everything that gets old. But yeah, I would think we'd be, I would move that we would apply for the grant.
I second that.
And direct the Public Works Director and administration to look into it and do what they need to do.
So we do have motions from councillors Kayler and Holden. I would like to add that the submission deadline for this grant is Friday, August 29th, 2025, no later than 5:00 PM Central Time. Is there more discussion? Please, councillor Wagner.
If we get the grant, we're not obligated, right? We don't have to do anything, right? Because if you get a grant, that's $200,000, how are you going to get the $800,000 to pay for the thing?
We, go ahead.
Well, I would say that as we're going over the grant, and if that's what it says, then that's another decision we got to make.
I, would you be amendable to have this presented for final submission at the next regular city council meeting in two weeks, which would be before August 29th, and allow us time to review it probably with your services as well, Chelsea?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
I will rescind my, or.
Amend?
Amend, not rescind and bring it back after the city attorney has looked at it.
Thank you. More discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. This carries unanimously. We'll get, working on the application, and thank you for bringing this forward.
I'd like that, that too.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for, you guys.
Thanks, Leif.
Can I leave this application with you?
I'll take that.
Take it, too.
There you go.
What is now item three to adopt a resolution approving application to conduct excluded bingo for International Falls Chamber of Commerce on December 4th, 2025, VFW Post 2948.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councillor Holden to approve.
Second.
Second by councillor Buller, is there discussion?
I'd just like to give a shout out to the VFW for always being so accommodating to all the different organizations in town that they let user license and raise money playing bingo there.
Yeah.
I'm involved in a couple myself, so.
Sure.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you. New business, item four, adopt a resolution approving commercial loan program funding in the amount of $24,999.99 as requested by True Star Federal Credit Union on behalf of Lac de Lune LLC, Max DeCharm. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anything you'd like to speak about your project?
No, I think, uh, just to give a little bit of background, uh, my wife and I, we are, we moved back officially full-time to the Falls in January, but we've been more and more involved here over the past couple of years, and our mission is really to try to get more people to move back to the Falls. And so through that conversation and with some city council members, we learned about this program where the city offers just a little bit of money at a low interest rate to help revitalize some, some real estate. And so we've taken advantage of that, and, uh, so far, not directly through this program, but so far through our efforts, we've been in direct, uh, we've worked directly to bring four households who were not living in the Falls back to the Falls, or to the Falls for the first time. So about, well, we have two that were High Falls natives who moved back, and then two who moved here for different jobs and stuff like that. So what we do is we take old houses in old High Falls, and we gut them, we make them good, and we make them rentable for people who are moving from out of town back to in town. And so that's what this loan program helps us do. That's what we're asking. It's also a benefit to the city, not very much, but you get 2% return on that money.
Thank you, and thank you for your work in bringing families back or that are new to our community.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Motions by councillor Buller and Wagner, is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this resolution is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DeCharm.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Next, under new business, item five, Public Works Committee Recommendations. Item A, approved proposal for scope of services for Highway 11 multi-use trail project with Bolton and Mink. Mr. Fisher, if you would like to come forward, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor, council, good evening. So this project is a project that we applied for funds through the Minnesota Act of Transportation Program for, and we were successful in getting those funds. It's 700, or 478,000 plus dollars, um, which will be the cost of construction, but it does not cover the engineering services. So this is a proposal for our engineering services to design and do the construction inspection for this project, so. Uh, the, it'll be paid for through, uh, permanent improvement funds.
Street PI?
Street PI, yes. And this is a trail project that'll be connecting, uh, 14th Avenue to 11th Street by the school. It'll be happening before the, uh, the street pro, or the highway project that they have coming in 2029, and this will be getting us a, a jump on that, so. And it'll help connect across, uh, a trail across the city, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Questions from council?
I'll make motion.
Motion by councillor Wagner to approve this proposal.
A second.
Second by councillor Buller. Is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Vote no, this recommendation is approved for one. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next. Array of Sunshine, number five, new business, to consider bandshell committee request to schedule an open house to gather community input on the bandshell. As many of you know, there is a bandshell committee. Councillors Wagner and Kayler are on it, and in my hands, I have a beautiful packet that is in the form of a survey. And since this is public information, like most things we do, there's some conceptualizations, including pictures of an old bandshell that is new and some other ideas. Is this something that we have a date in mind for?
We, no, we'd have to talk about that here, a date. Councillor Wagner, if you have any ideas on a date?
Soon, but I, I would say we, we, we still have unanswered questions with, um, what we were asked tonight about the insurance. I think we have to have that answer, if it can be used for, say, an ambulance debt reduction, I think we need to have that, we need to know that.
Thank you, councillor Wagner. Councillor.
I think we could set a date, maybe, and the question could be, um, if feasible, use the money for something else, something like that.
Yeah, E would have to be changed.
Uh-huh.
I think E would have to be changed.
Is there a date, seeing that it's your committee, that you would suggest an open house for?
Well, we want to have time to let people get the information, know what they want. I would say towards the end of the month, uh, when that would be for everybody, like the last week in August. Should, and we should be able to find that out soon enough.
Yeah.
About the.
And we should be getting that information pretty soon.
Say on Monday, the 25th of August?
That would work for me.
There would be a, the potential that we have a special city council meeting that night.
Yep.
Similar to how we just did the, the deer feeding ordinance, open house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, thank you.
And, and just so the people that are here that don't know the questions, um, as you know, there's been some discussion of, do we want to have the traditional bandshell like it was? We have some that want that, we have some that would like something a little more multi-use, not just for performing, and then there's going to be an option to, uh, just have a bigger pavilion, and then not do anything with the money and just leave, uh, the green space, if that's allowed, with the insurance. And people get to give their input at the meeting in written contact, um, and, or comment here to City Hall by the 25th. And you can just mail it to City Hall or, uh, email, uh, city staff with your thoughts. That'll get it, give us an idea what people want.
Thank you, councillor.
But you're still going to have an open house.
Yes, but this is for the people that ca- Yes, but this is for the people that can't make it.
Okay. You got it.
And hopefully we'll be able to get some of the designs out, and that, and we for sure will get it on the Facebook page and other thing, yeah, and out on the board here and some other avenues, so people know what we're talking about.
Well, you need a motion? On the open house?
August 25th, save 6:00 PM?
Sure. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Holden, for making the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner, is there any discussion date, place, time, city council chambers, Wednesday, August 25th at 6:00 PM?
I think it's a good thing they were setting a date, just because we've had the runaround from the insurance company, and that's why we don't have any numbers yet, because they're just kind of like, oh, give us a couple of weeks, give us a couple of weeks. They, they know that we have to have this on that time to present it to you, everybody out here. We need to put the pressure on them. I mean, it's just been
I agree.
Too long.
I agree.
Every time they say it, go two weeks, and it's two weeks again. So it's, it's time to get going on this thing.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there further input, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, we have a date set for the bandshell. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Item six, in regard to the International Falls Ambulance Service. Item A, authorize talks with private ambulance service providers. To provide some input to that, I believe we discussed that at a previous meeting. There's been, I won't say interest, but parties that have reached out and, to have that discussion formally would require council action. Would that be correct, Chelsea?
To have, like, a committee talk to them, or who reach out?
To start, as a council, discussing what the options are directly with those providers.
Who would be reaching out? The whole council, or like through Betty?
Through Betty, or through Councilor Holden and I. I ju, I wanted it to be formal in the sense that we don't have one person sitting over off to the side trying to make.
You can certainly do a motion. It could just be direction as well, though, similar to when you provide direction to the bandshell committee. When you're providing direction to a committee or individual, you don't necessarily need a motion, but you certainly can.
Okay. How about consideration for a motion to direct the ambulance committee of Councilor Holden and I to reach out to private ambulance service providers as routine due diligence in ongoing
So move.
Talks.
Second.
We have motions, first by Councilor Buller, second by Councilor Wagner. Is there discussion on that topic? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this carries unanimously, item A, thank you. Six B, discuss the funding plan to purchase the three ambulances currently on order. This was a question from the council at a previous meeting in regard to the three ambulances that we currently have on order.
Oh, you're looking at me?
I'm sorry, Ms. Rudd.
Um, sure, I can either take it, or did you want to take it, Adam? Do you have any preference?
Oh, I'm sorry, or Chief Manasseh, I, well.
Emma and I did speak today, and I think we're both maybe, probably going to have, give you a rehash of what we've done in the past here, unless there's some further direction, but we did present a plan on February 5th of '24, which I know was before you were seated mayor. I think the rest of the council was here then. So that plan was laid out at that time of ordering the two rigs to replace 15 and 16 and 26, and order the other rig in early '27. The options we had laid out for that was the public safety money, the donation from Coochin County, and then we budgeted money in '23 that we carried over, and then we had budgeted money in '24 for the purchase of an ambulance that we were going to earmark. So all of that obligation was included in that plan. We presented that same plan again this year in July with no changes to that plan, and it was again approved by the council. The only thing that maybe you're not privy to, Mayor, or we're not around for, was in the February discussion, we did talk about doing similar to what we do with other things, including radios, other high-budget items in that respect. As we can do municipal leasing through one of our, our vendors here, and we had all of that laid out and a proposal done for us. We did not, at the time, find that to be financially sound, or the council did not. So we, we opted against that and went with the aforementioned plan. If there's... So we did the motion in the minutes. The only thing I could not find is I did request, and I think this was a committee of the whole meeting, I couldn't find the minutes on this, but I believe it would have been the first committee of the whole meeting of this year was requesting to allocate, I, I will read it to you here, approve to allocate $150,000 of unused funds currently in the '24 ambulance budget in line item 5800. So that was a capital outlay we set aside in '24, which is what we're talking about. I'm requesting it either be allocated into 2025 ambulance budget 5800 or other suitable place to be used with the already budgeted $200,000 in the 2025 ambulance budget for order purchase of a new ambulance to align with our purchasing plan discussed and approved in early '24. So I don't know if that was approved or not approved. Emma and I did talk about that, and so that, that would be the only outlying question. Otherwise, to answer, to answer, we did have a laid out plan that was approved by council. If there's something more in-depth you're looking for, I...
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say that I think we need the ambulances, or at least a new ambulance, or two, or four, or three, more than some other things that we've done, but for tonight, that's neither here nor there. Is what my concern is, what, for the council level discussion, is that when we take the money out of reserves and we loan the money to the ambulance fund, that increases the debt of the ambulance service, and it lowers our reserves on the general fund side or in that area, unless we directly levy for it, or unless we get some massive amount of money. So the way that that's kept, we don't have the money. Our ambulance debt is still going to go up, and it's gone up since we went ALS. I understand that. I also understand that we're trying to come up with some solutions to support the service as we've had it. So that's why I asked about the concern. So going into this next year and this following year, I'm fine with increasing our tax levy to cover those purchases, but if we don't, we're going to have to take the money from somewhere else. If we have the 251 that we got from the state, that was already in our reserves over here. When we write the check to the ambulance fund, the debt goes up, and so it's, that's what we're internally fighting with the service, and it's not a knock on a great service. We need the service. That's why we're here. My concern is the solvency of the city, especially if we come in six, seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars over budget like we did last year. On a general operating basis, we're toast. I mean, we can borrow a bunch of money, put the money back, but until we can start having a surplus and provide all of our services, that's my fear, not about the ambulances. We know how many miles they have.
One thing we got is we got options, you know, I mean, you and I are sitting down at the table, right? And if it goes the way, I understand if the county takes it over, that's one way, that's one option. We wouldn't even be paying for ambulances. It'd be the taxing district that would be paying for it, okay? The other one is, the option is, if it goes private, we wouldn't be paying for those ambulances. They, they would be taking that in as part of the operation.
Other than, my, my only two counterpoints that I'd like to share is, we're, we'll be in the taxing district, if there is one, so our taxes still go up, and that's fine. We want the district to support it.
Yeah.
But on the private side, I don't think, and Chief Manasseh, you'll know more about this than me, just in one of the private companies that called us, whether the county took the certificate, whether then Mayor, our friend Mayor Wagner came here and took the certificate, if it's a private company, they almost always require a subsidy because it is so difficult to run an ambulance service and stay solvent to begin with.
So the decision that needs to probably be made is, when we examined the taxing district previously, three years ago, or four years ago into three years ago, and then when we also examined the private entity taking over, both, in both scenarios, the equipment was a straight transfer to either entity. So if we signed the taxing agreement, all equipment was a straight transfer. We didn't get paid for it. I would assume that should be a different scenario. If we're sitting on three brand-new ambulances at $800,000, that needs to be a negotiation point, or you need to not do that.
Right.
I'm not advocating that you not do that, but I'm just saying that scenario needs to change if that's...
Sure.
But keep in mind, when we did that previously in both agreements, that was taking over the equipment we had at the time.
Chief, I, I want to thank you for, for that comment that you made about whether we do it or we don't do it, because the discussion is about where we're at, and not to have a study session at a regular city council meeting, but, so that we hopefully have, all have the same understanding.
I, I do want to share with the council too, today, as directed by, from last week, I did send some emails out last week, and I just got responses today on the possibility of remounting boxes that we have. There's a little cost savings, but not a lot. It's similar to what we ran into before, so I got what I'm going to say is ballpark figures over the phone today, with formal quotes on the way that I haven't received prior to this meeting. So I, I don't want to share those numbers right now, because I don't have anything formally, but what was relayed to me over the phone is not a significant cost savings. There's, there's a little bit, but it's not significant.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Manasseh? Thank you, Chief. Is there any other updates? Seeing no further updates, we'll move on to item seven, new business. Is there any other business to come before this council? At this time, we can move back to our audience open forum, where there's an opportunity. Name an address, and please limit five minutes or less.
Alan Cruz, 3077 County Road 20, International Falls. Just a couple of things based off of the last two points, is, I guess, I'm, I, I don't understand why the ambulance service is looked at as something other than just a mandatory city service. You're not going to look at the, you know, the chief of police and say, oh, sorry, we ain't got no money. Send them loose. Don't put them in jail. You don't get new cars. You rebuild roads. You take care of sewer systems, because that's the responsibility of the city. The city needs the ambulance, period. Talking to an outside private source, that's insulting, no offense. That's insulting to your crew that's sitting here. You're more than willing to sit down and have a conversation with an outside source about having them come in when they, to get paid, still have to set up a taxing district, which the county isn't going to do. They haven't done it with you in 20 years. There's no pain point for them to. You can't force them to take the ALS. They have to be willing to. You should be figuring out that you're at four paramedics, how to get back to six, and just simply raise the levy and treat the ambulance service as just a critical piece of this city, because it is. Period. End of conversation. Treating them as a secondary outside entity that, oh, well, we owe money, and, oh, I don't know what we're going to do, is absolutely the, the highest level of horseshit. And you guys all know better. I apologize for the language.
Please, that's your warning.
Yep, absolutely. We can do better. We need to do better. The city ambulance needs to be here, period, without exception, and raising the taxes to do it over other things, way, way, way more important.
I would like to add for council information that in almost all cases, taking the service private was a function of a county entity taking the certificate away from a municipality so that the district could be taxed evenly and the service provided equitably to all people in the primary service area.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi. Let us have a couple of questions. Rhonda Benedict, 909 Sixth Street. So one of my questions is, when you're talking about the bandshell, I could have sworn that you said you already had the insurance money. Pretty sure that you said you had the insurance money already. If not, how have you paid for the demolition of the bandshell? Because it was a large, large lump sum that you said you already paid out, right? Yes? Wasn't a large sum of money that was already paid for demolition of the bandshell?
Recently. Are you referring to jackhammering the concrete out?
The whole bandshell came down. So how did you pay for that, if you didn't have the insurance money?
Please, Ms. Rudd, will...
So, um...
Wait a minute, I
Oh, yeah.
I want to say all my questions?
Sure.
Because I don't want you to cut me off in the five minutes, so you can answer that in a second. So that was one of my questions. So you keep saying that Betty's still working with the insurance company, so that was, could have sworn that you said you had, somebody asked about the insurance money, if you still had it, or if you've already spent it, could have sworn you said you still had it. So that was my question. You can answer in a second. Second one, lead pipes. She asked about the lead pipes. Did you, or did you not just say you're rethinking that? Didn't know lead pipes. You said you thought they were happening this year. He said it's in with the Ninth Street project. So my question is, are you using some of the lead, lead pipe money that you got through funding on the Ninth Street project? And, last question. You just voted through the Ninth Street project with the bonding, so you say, say we paid for the, how do you say it? Is it the Vector machine? Am I saying that right? Okay, so we've already paid for it. Now you want to refinance it, so the citizens paid for it through our taxes. Now you want us to pay for it again through refinancing, so that is also with, um, interest on that. So now you want us to pay for it again. Okay, so there you go. First question.
Thank you, Ms. Benedict. Shall time permit, if you could?
Go ahead.
If you're willing to help with the bandshell.
We'll answer as many of the questions that I have the knowledge on.
Okay.
So the bandshell demolition that was conducted, and we got that bid out, I believe it was Wagner Construction that got the Wagner Construction that got the low bid on that, and they completed that demolition. We were reimbursed from the insurance company for that demolition. So we have been reimbursed in part for a number of our expenses to date. I won't say that all of them have been reimbursed, but the bulk of them have been. The dispute is about the rebuilding and basically what we will be able to have, what pot of money we will be able to have to rebuild whatever type of, whether it's an exact replica or something similar. We just need to know essentially, I mean, step one is finding out how much money, and that is what we're dealing with, the insurance company on, the disputing on some of that, and what they want versus what we want, type of thing. The lead pipes, I believe, was your next question? Okay. So the lead pipes, because the lead pipe project came in so high initially, a couple years ago, when it was initially bid out, in order to get a better price and better utilize those funds from the state of Minnesota and get more lead pipes replaced, we bundled that as a part of the Ninth Street project. So the Ninth Street project is actually a three-year project. It's going to primarily done in '25 and '26, but there's going to be a little bit curtailing into 2027.
So you're using part of the lead pipe money with the Ninth Street project? Yes, no?
Not exactly. So there is a portion of lead pipes that are being replaced on Ninth Street, as well as Fifth, Sixth, I believe Seventh Street, if I'm not mistaken. So those will be separately. It's separated, but it's in order to get a better price on the project overall.
Because I didn't know that there was more money coming out next year for lead pipes.
Yes. So that's why we want to get a role on the lead pipes and get that moving forward so we can utilize those funds and essentially target as many individual services as possible.
Okay, and then the fact...
That's five. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer the rest of your questions after.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm Bobby Bernath. I live at 1906 Avenue. I have a couple of things. When Julie Malmstrm was up here talking, I remember back in October, I believe, if you look back in the minutes in '24, when we started talking about the lead pipes and stuff, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that you guys talked about her Sixth Street being the first project to start. And that's just what I thought I heard, but maybe you can look back in the minutes and
So that was in '24, but I would give some basics on it. The money that was received from the state, and I could ask you, I'm going to fill in probably the blank of how much it was, the first shot of money, call it, went out for bid for the lead service lines, and the bid that came back was astronomical. Well, I think it was something along the lines of like $30,000 or $40,000 a service. It was really high. So at that time, the city opted to not accept the bid, at which now this year, it was bundled, the lead service portion with the Ninth Street Total Rehabilitation Project. So is what that allowed to do, it would be like taking in your vehicle, and when you have the oil changed, also have the tires rotated. So that is how that came about, and I believe, Jason, that when we did that, that the lead service line replacement cost, did it come down to like $1,800?
Wrong that.
So, no, I wasn't aware on whether the council was or not at this point, probably can't be changed that it wasn't happening this year, but the intention is certainly there to get the lead pipes changed out. Is there any chance that's occurring this year, Jason?
There is a chance, but the contractor did say they're trying to get another crew available to come up and do those services. I just don't have a guarantee.
And I would add that the contracts for those projects awarding that work, to the best of my knowledge, has been signed. So I don't know how it couldn't happen at this point unless there was an act of God or force majeure, or some legal-esque term that stopped it. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is that it's all there.
Okay. The other question I have is, last month I asked about the molten vent engineering service. Last month, it was $130,000. Now this month, it's $100,000. Would it be possible to do a survey to see if it would be reasonable to hire an engineer rather than contract it out? Because in two months, that's almost a quarter million.
Something that I've always believed as mayor is that the city should have its own engineer that's independent of anybody on staff. We certainly are spending enough on engineering work on an ongoing basis. There's some ins and outs of that. Jason works directly for Bolton Menk. He's our engineer and does, I believe, a fantastic job.
He does a fantastic job.
I want to point out that he started as the city engineer for the city of Chisholm when St. Louis County Commissioner Mike Jugovich was mayor, and so I don't know if he would consider working directly for us. I'm guessing not.
Well, I remember back in the day, did we not have Gary Skulman?
Yeah.
I mean...
Gary was, he was an engineer, but he wasn't an engineer.
Right. He was Public Works Director, okay?
But he wasn't an engineer.
We did have Joel Sutherland for a while. He was a city engineer for two or three years, and he decided to get out of here.
And I would guess even then, he was probably contracting out some of the work that they do. And when you see these big bills, too, a lot of them are, when projects are finally getting done, well, then that's when we get billed. There could be three, four projects altogether there that they're getting paid for out of time.
But you're right.
Because Bolton, I'm just trying to, not, I'm just trying to explain to you why, because the engineers, it's just one guy doing all this. They have all these different departments to take care of all these, right? Because roads are different than sewers and stuff like that, and one engineer, even if we had one, it'd be like supervising.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Helen Tweet, 3001 County Road 2 North. Just going back to the ambulance issue, I had a lengthy conversation with Representative Scraba today, and there were a couple of things we touched on. One of them was billing for the ambulance. He said that when he was mayor of Ely, they had a company do their billing that was terrible, and it took months and months and months to get their payments. And when they switched companies, they got them within a month. So I was just wondering, who does our ambulance billing, and, you know, if that would be something we could reach out to the city of Ely and see who they use, and maybe a change to a different billing. I know at that public meeting back in November of '23, I'm remembering a figure of like $50,000 a year this company was being paid to do our ambulance billing, and I said, my goodness, you know, we can't do that in-house, but evidently it's quite complicated. I'm sure it hasn't gotten any less complicated, but that was something he and I talked about. And also, he reiterated that St. Louis County is on board with a taxing district. He said Rainier might be a little more difficult to convince, but, and he also said he would be available if we have a public forum, you know, to get the information out to everybody, he would be more than happy to attend. I left a message at Senator Housechild's office and did not hear back from him today yet. So just some thoughts, that things are in the works. He also said to me, things are in the works for when they get back into session after the New Year, but, you know, we have kind of a deadline, I guess, to get on taxing in, you know, districts by July 1st. So he's aware of that, and it was good to hear that it feels like something, they know this is terrible all over the state of Minnesota. My primary request was that the legislature take up the issue of EMS being deemed essential in the state of Minnesota. There are now 13 states in this country that, you know, call it that, whatever. I don't know how you could have a fire department be essential and not an ambulance department, but, so there may be some movement on that, too, but that's all I know. Some of it, it felt encouraging. Yeah.
Please, Councilor Wagner?
We have changed billing. Chief Manasseh did a few years ago, and went through the same thing, so we're right there. We've done those things.
Okay, good, good. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
And just to clear up, we don't, we get, we give them a percent of what they collect, right? Isn't that how we pay them?
Yes.
Not that we let, got to...
So the company that Ely had issues with was the same company we were using, which was a lot of them around the area. We all switched to a similar company. At the time of the switch, it was $29 a run was the billing, so you have 1,500 runs a year, $29 a run. The new company changed their billing status to a percentage of the revenues, so the more revenue they collect, the higher they collect their bill, which incentivizes them to do a little bit better job. They want to get the most money they can for our service, to get a bigger bill that they get paid, is kind of the gist of that. We've seen better collection rates from them, and...
Good. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lois Lundin. I live at 2222 Third Avenue East. I assume that this is the report you were talking about earlier, Mr. Mayor, that had the discrepancies on the monies held in deposit, and there weren't questions from council, but I have questions, and I would like to understand the same that all of you do. So when I look at the June 16 report, the Brammer Bank ICS cash sweep is where I see the changes, the discrepancies. There are numbers here that just don't make a whole lot of sense. In June 16, the reported balance was $4,600,000 and change. And then there's a column on the July 21 report where that same account reads $7,76,796. And then in the next column, it's $3,635,958.46. Emma, can you shed a little light on me on what all of these numbers are and why they're so different?
Yeah, so I provide a staff member with a copy of our investment report, and in the process of, it's in a different order than what they have here. So they were putting it in order, and they inadvertently copied an old month's figure from the ICS sweep, hence the different totals. So the $36,35,958.46 was the correct number for the ICS sweep for the July 21 cover sheet.
So is the amount of the error, the difference in the $7 million and $3 million?
Yes. Yes, the, I don't know if you have the highlighted?
I do.
Yes.
I do.
So the ones that are highlighted, so the one that struck through is, it was what was originally reported inadvertently. The one in the green highlighted is the correct version.
Okay, so we were going to see a balance on monies held in deposit of $10,268,000, and after the error, we're really at $6,827,000. Is that right?
Yes. However, the fund balance report, that's always behind and attached, that always had the correct total.
So our correct total as of July 21 is $6,827,531.30.
As of 6:30. So the report is done on July 21st, but it's reconciled through the end of June.
Okay. And that's our monies held in deposit. That's our cash on hand.
Correct. And that's obviously at the low end of our year. So at the beginning of July, we receive our funds for LGA and first half property taxes. So June and usually the end, and beginning of December are our lowest months where we have funds in deposit.
So the $6,827,531.30 includes, like, restricted funds? Is that dollars that are only...
Yes.
It's not general funding? That's our restricted funding?
Correct. Yes, it's everything.
All right. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Please come forward.
Rennie Calder, 1901 Sixth Avenue East. I have a question about the tax, the 3% tax that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Is that something that's mandated by state statute, or is it is?
Yes. I used to serve as the chairman of a visitor and tourism bureau, so that, I feel like I can answer this with 100% certainty. There's a state statute that allows certain local areas, like our municipality, to have an opt-in tax called a bed tax. So when someone comes to town and stays at the New American, or the Cobblestone, or any other hotel, by law, they have to charge the bed tax. It's a trust tax, so there's no way to know if they paid it or not, but it's the honor system. The money comes to the city, and then it gets transferred back out and goes to the local visitor and tourism bureau, in which those dollars are then used to market our community for tourism purposes, for lodging and anything that's associated with it. Seeing no further comment at this time, reminders, there is a special city council meeting Monday, August 11th, 5:30 p.m., and the next regular city council meeting is Monday, August 18th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. Is there any other business to come before the council?
We have a couple of meetings tomorrow. We have a finance meeting at 1 o'clock, and then we have airport meeting at 4 o'clock.
That's correct. Yes, at 1 p.m., that will kick off the budgeting process for next year.
Bring your party hats.
Mayor, I do have one more.
Please.
Just before it ends up in a public uproar. When Ms. Bernath was up, trying, saying her piece, I forgot to set the timer, and I whispered, and I'm certain that Mike picked it up. I said, O-S-H-I-T, and I apologize. I'm sure it's going to pick it up. It won't happen.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the council?
National Night Out tomorrow.
From 4 to 7?
4 to 7. 4, must be 4 to 7. Or until they run out of hot dogs and bratwurst, and, you know, kind of the shine leaves.
Thank you, Councilor. This meeting's adjourned.